It's for me to decide. I'm just gonna have her finish.
Thank you.
This is a personal attack on somebody.
No, I'm not attacking.
No, she's asking a question.
I'm asking a question. And you're not responding to any of these requests. And your last one.
It's a narrative. You're phrasing a narrative and you're creating a narrative. I understand you're allowed to speak, but.
But you're cutting me off when I'd like to speak.
Asking a question, it doesn't matter whether or not somebody is choosing whether or not to be hooked up to water or to some other service, whether or not they want to serve on the plane.
I think that's your opinion, and I'd like to be able to ask this question. Thank you, John.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. But you're not responding to any of these requests, and your last one to get hooked up. Why?
Well, in the first place, number of requests, there's a difference of opinion. In fact, I believe during the faculty, Mr. Ford and I, as to how many times he has contacted me and how many times I have responded to him. He has told me he's left messages for me, and we all have cell phones, and you can kind of tell when someone calls, and I'm an IT guy, by the way. Even if it was a message, there's a record that a call came in. Messages do get lost in junk filters, spam filters, I don't know what's all that happened to one of them. I asked some questions of him in the summer of 2023. I said, I'm eager to go ahead and get this cooked up. I'd like to answer some questions. And I asked the questions, and I didn't receive any answers. And then he contacted me this summer, and he basically asked the same questions you did. And I said, if I've missed anything, I apologize. I don't think there's been quite as many as you say there have been, but I'm still waiting for answers to my questions. And so a year later, I got answers to the questions I had posed. And these weren't astronomical questions. They were things about, basically, what was the process for being hooked up as far as, was there a standard kit they used? In other words, do they just go out, you know, I know that it dulls me, please. Do they go down to Home Depot and buy a box of fittings and stuff? It's gotta be a standard thing. I talked to somebody who's in the business, and he said to me, basically, you go down to the plumbing supply house, you tell them, I'm doing a hookup in this town, and they know exactly what fittings and stuff they use. He couldn't answer those questions. I asked what the status would be of my old well. I got two different answers. I asked about the status of the fact that why I'm supposed to go in my driveway. My driveway is 900 feet long, and if my driver's gonna be dug up for two days, what's that gonna schedule gonna look like? How's that gonna be handled so my family isn't basically walking down a few feet out to a car park at somebody else's house every morning? Or stuck inside the property and forced to drive out via bog roads? I had a couple of other questions as well, and I asked because of the length and the communication challenges, I asked that my answers be given in writing. And that was the request I made this summer, toward the end of summer. I wanna get hooked up. I don't like being on bottled water. My house is unsalable. My house is unsalable. I had a job offer about a year ago. It wasn't something I decided to act on, but it was out of state. I would have to move. I couldn't sell my house if I had to. So I'm on bottled water. I'm not enjoying it. I'm not enjoying it. I wanna get it done right. I know there's a lot of challenges. The other questions I asked were, okay, I've heard a lot of stories about people having trouble, they've been hooked up with water pressure and water quality. What's gonna be done? What's the process gonna be to follow through on that if I have a problem? I'm not looking for problems. What if? I look around and see everybody else getting into lifeboats. Okay, well, maybe I should look at that, too. Why are they doing that? Why are people complaining? Why are people saying they have problems? Are they all this disgruntled? Or is it something that I should be aware and take notice of? You know, when you're on the highway and the traffic slows down, you don't keep your foot on the gas. You say, wait a minute, why are they slowing down? What's going on here? And there was one more. Oh, I asked where the water would be coming from. But when I get hooked up, where will it be coming from at that point in time? And I did get answers to most of those questions in a letter that was originally dated in June, and I think the date was crossed out, and it was sent to me in, I believe, late August, early September. And it basically said that if, you know, if I didn't play ball, I was gonna forfeit my ability to hook up. And I didn't like the tone of that letter one bit. And if you're privy to all these things, you're probably privy to my response. Were you privy to my response? Letter I wrote back?
Why are you the only one that didn't agree to this? You're the only one.
I was, I'm the last one. I'm the last one. Someone's gonna be last.
I got that from a very good source.
Well, he's not the only one, because I'm not hooked up to it.
Why not?
Because the water is still problematic.
I think we're a little off topic. We're off topic, so.
All right.
He did. He answered the questions. Thank you. I would also like to ask, have all of you ask questions of him as well, please.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Townsend.
I just have one question. I think the planning board normally meets on the second and fourth Tuesday evening. Am I correct, Mr. Robinson?
Correct.
I just wanna check and make sure you're available on those nights.
Yeah, that was something I did check out, because I go into Boston three days a week, and I'm at the mercy of the MBTA, so.
Okay.
Which, if you have, as a sidebar, if you have to get onto the public transport train, the Kingston line is one of the best one around. I mean, it's usually not too late, it's usually not too crowded, it usually breaks down less than some of the other ones, so, you know, nothing else, not at the time, yeah.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Ryan?
I think you mentioned wanting to be more friendly to businesses. So what are some of your thoughts about how we can be more friendly to businesses or those that wanna start a business in town? What do you see some of the challenges are for those people, and what can we do to make it better?
Years ago, when I first moved in here, one of the things I heard, and I don't know if it's anecdotal or not, but well, by definition, it's anecdotal, I heard it, but that there was a problem with signs. How do you advertise business without a sign? And that sort of thing. And I think, never having run a bit, I mean, I've worked for myself as an individual sole proprietor, I guess you'd call it, but it was as a consultant. And then when I was a kid, I painted the bottom of boats, and that was kind of word of mouth. I didn't hang on a sign or anything. But, so I've never run a business with a physical plant and so forth and so on. But I think, basically, finding a way to entice businesses into town certainly involves taxes that aren't too high, services that are available and reliable, good roads. I mean, we have something we didn't have here when I moved to town. The North Carver Expressway, as I call it. I don't know if I got the first ticket on it, but I got pinched on that on 44 when it first opened one morning. And the cop stopped me, he says, why are we going so fast? I said, exuberance! It takes me 22 minutes to get to Route 3. I'm making 10 minutes. He says, you know, make it five minutes. At this rate, pal, slow down, will you? So I think that, you know, that didn't quite bring the railroad to town, but I think it did make a big difference in ease of coming in and going out. It's a question I've thought about in the past, but not a lot lately. But I think that, basically, just being willing to work with, you know, reasonably, I mean, not give away the store, but I mean, I think my first interest, my first concern would be the interest of the citizens of the town, the taxpayer, the well-being of the town. And I think that business has a place in that. I think business in the right parts of town, in the right places, you know, I think we've got a lot of vacant buildings. I think, you know, you get one business in, you get another business next door, and all of a sudden, you got a traffic problem? No, maybe not. I hope not. But, you know, I think that there's some positives that we probably could emphasize. But again, without going any further, that's not something I've given a great deal of thought to lately, but.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely a concern.
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of them are sort of statements, I guess, and then a question. So I assume that you know that the planning board can't make businesses come to town?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. I mean, you know, if you know someone, you can talk to them, but that's their call. And while we do have, I like to see what I call Carver appropriate businesses, I think so far, we've been pretty successful with that. So that's just a caveat that I wanted to get out there. The other is that when we first did our master plan, I think it was in 20-some years, the first time we did it again was the year 2000. And our consultant at the time pointed out to us that the quantity and quality of the type of businesses we would need in town to really significantly make a difference on our tax bills would change the face of Carver. Which is not to say we shouldn't have businesses here. It's just kind of a warning that I have always heeded. We do have to be careful.
No, I totally agree. My first concern, again, is for the character of the town. I live here. I live here. I wanna live here. I like here.
Right, because that's why we all moved here, presumably.
Yeah.
Right. And the last thing is, it sounds like you'd like to make some changes to the sign bylaw?
That's not, that was just something I recall hearing, again, this is going back 20 years. That was just one of my first impressions of the way things, business executive in town, that I did hear about this, you know. At that point in time, I didn't hear about construction of fire stations or schools. That was the issue that I heard from 34 people, that, again, it could have been sour grapes, but that was just one thing that stuck in my mind.
Right. So it is, we got the bylaw passed at town meeting in 1998, so it, you know, could use some tweaking, I guess, and it is pretty complicated. But just so you know, you know, there is a process, obviously.
Oh, absolutely, no. I'm quite cognizant of what the functions of the board are, and I think that, I don't have any agenda.
Okay.
I don't have any agenda. You know, my way of doing any kind of business is to, you know, look at things as fairly as I can and look what the facts are, and look what the opinions are. I mean, the facts can be 100% in one direction, and your public opinion is 100% in the opposite direction, well, someone's gonna give. And that's obviously a given, I think, but, no, I think everything has to be judged on its own merits.
Right.
And in the case of a town, as an integral part of what else is not just what the master plan says, but what is good for the town.
Right, good. I'm glad to hear you say that. Much appreciated.
I use the word business. I'm not looking to bring business, quack business, but I'd like to see, I think it's a good phrase to use, appropriate business.
Right. Great, thank you. Mr. Jeff?
All right, then, at this time, I'd like to ask if somebody would make a motion to accept Mr. Alan Maynard's application for the associate member of the planning board.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second to that motion.
All right. Mr. Shea?
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Lynn Williams says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Ellen Sedillo says nay.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Would someone like to make a motion for the select board?
Yes, I'll make a motion to appoint Alan Maynard as an associate member of the planning board.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. It looks like you are our new associate member, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
You're a pleasure. Thank you.
Don't forget to get sworn in by the town clerk once you get a letter.
I'm in trouble now, huh?
Mr. Robinson, if you would accept a motion to adjourn? Yes. If you're offering to make a motion to adjourn, I'll take it.
So moved.
And a second.
Second to that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Thank you. Assistance?
Our next item on the agenda is a joint meeting with the Finance Committee. I saw the chair a moment ago. Are the members of the Finance Committee here? If you wanna come up here, use a mic. Ms. Preval, you can come up, too, if you want.
I think Beth is here, too.
Hey, Barry.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Very good.
I assume Beth will be back. I think she caught an emergency call.
She'll be right here.
Hi. I'm gonna give it a minute, folks. Let her take her time.
Do you think we could take a brief recess while we're at seven?
Yeah, that's a good idea. Let's take a quick five-minute recess. At this point, I'd like to introduce Pat Mahar, Chair of the Finance Committee. Pat, if you could introduce the people at your table.
Okay, we've got our, four of our five members here tonight, myself, Walter Call, Barry Struski, and Beth Solger. And we will, at 7:30, we'll call the Finance Committee meeting to order in a joint meeting with the select board.
And I'd also like to introduce Karen Preval, who's our Director, Finance Department Director. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
And I believe our guest tonight is Renee Davis, our Auditor for the Town of Carver. Thank you for being here, Renee.
Thank you.
Would you like to start?
Sure. Can you hear okay?
Yeah.
Is that working? Okay. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Again, Renee Davis, I was the audit partner on the engagement. I'm here tonight to talk about the town's audit for fiscal year 2023, which was just wrapped up and finalized approximately a month ago. As a way of introduction, you did see me here presenting for the '22 audit, and the reports that you see in front of you are under Powers &amp; Sullivan, so I think that needs a little bit of an explanation. Powers &amp; Sullivan was the firm engaged to do the audit, and the reports were issued under Powers &amp; Sullivan. We merged with Markham effective February 1st, 2024. Not unusual in this day and age for CPA firms to merge, but the new name at this time is Markham. For a little bit more information, Markham is in the process of merging again. And within the next few months, it is more likely than not that we will be merging with Cbiz. So you likely will not have a report issued under the name of Markham, but probably you will skip over that. As far as that goes, though, the team didn't change. The people doing the audit didn't change. We had the same staff on site doing the audit. I've been the partner for a number of years since Rich Sullivan actually retired. So same process, same basic audit processes. What happens with audits, especially with government audits, is the GASB is active, and new governmental accounting statements come into play, as well as the AICPA issuing audit guidance on governmental audits. So there have been some changes, and will continue to be some changes in the process as we go forward. And I'm gonna talk tonight a little bit about the 2023 audit. We have up on the screen the financial statements, the main, the main report that's issued under this audit. There's actually three reports that get issued to you, the main being the financial statements, that's the real focus of our audit, along with the report on federal awards or your federal expenditures, and a report to management or the management letter. So 2023 was a little bit of a different year than the way we're usually explaining this to you. You had turnover in your finance staff shortly after. We do the fieldwork. Usually, we come out in the fall to do the year-end fieldwork. You've closed your June 30th books. We come out in the fall and start the audit process. And then usually, it's several months later till we get sort of some of the bigger liability information. That's not part of your regular day-to-day audit. Last year, we, same thing, we were here in the fall. At that point in time, however, a lot of, you had turnover in your finance team. There were several accounts that the ledgers weren't done. You still needed some entries. You hired some outside help to come in to help you get caught up on that. We're happy now Karen's, Karen's on board, and Karen was here for the wrap-up of it and to be able to get the audit out the door. In addition to that, in fiscal year '23, you changed general ledger system. So if you can have two things that can kind of, you know, disrupt the normal processes, one is even with a full staff that's been around for a long time, implementing a new general ledger system and converting from a tried, a known system to a new one, changing your chart of accounts, it's a pretty big undertaking. And doing that at the same time that you didn't have full-time, regular staff in place led to a few bumps in the road. So you will talk a little bit about the management letter, but really, the timing of when we were able to get cash reconciliations, the ability to tie out the budget, some of those things. There were some challenges to being able to, one, audit the financial statements, but also, as a non-audit service, one of the things we do is help the town to prepare your financial statements. So we put the reports together, but we only do that when we get information from the town. So there were delays in that for fiscal year 2023. Overall, the opinion that we gave on the financial statements, when we were finally able to get the whole financial statements together and give our audit opinion, was a clean opinion. So there's nothing that we know of that we think is materially misstated in your statements. We think, and with that, the financial position of the town was not the question. The, I'll walk through the financial statements with you. The financial position seems okay. I'm gonna say, seems good, seems to be improving year over year, no issues with that. The concern is, when we do the audit, we really have to look at your internal controls and assess the risk that something could go wrong. And because we weren't able to get information timely, there actually were some things. Timely information being the key to this, there were some decisions made in the town related to some of the appropriations at town meeting that weren't made with complete financial information, and we'll walk through that. What I'm gonna do first, if it's okay, is just walk through the basic financial statements. I'm not gonna read every page, but just to kind of give you a highlight of the results of operations and what's in this report. It's a pretty big report, but only a small piece of it is the town's financial statements. So let's, let's see if I can do, see if I can get to this. Table of contents will show you that there's 70, over 70 pages in the report. We're not gonna walk through the whole thing. But the first part of it is the Powers &amp; Sullivan letterhead with our audit opinion. It is a longer audit opinion that you would see typically in, in public, you know, or corporate financial statements. Because it really, the governmental accounting standards, yes.
I just wanted to ask if you could increase the font size for those of us who might need it.
That is a good question.
Especially people at home.
I don't know if I can, but I will try. Hold on one sec.
There should, there's a little plus sign on the top.
There, okay, there is. Is that better?
That's much better. Thank you.
So the report, it starts with our opinions. They're clean opinions, meaning unmodified, no, nothing that we have to report to you to say that you were not following accounting standards, or there was anything misstated that we found within the financial statements. We do follow government auditing standards. So auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, along with government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General. So it's a deeper scope to the audit, because you are a governmental unit, because you do have federal awards. We have to look at your internal controls over all of those processes. I mentioned earlier that we help to prepare the financial statements. However, management of the town, your finance department, is fully responsible for the information in these reports. We get all of the information from the town. We put it together in this, in this format. We then draft a report and give it back to the town with a crosswalk. These were your ledgers. This is the information you provided, and here are the financial statements, and management takes responsibility for that information. Then we come to the auditor's responsibility. We are, we have to be independent. We have to use professional judgment, along with planning the audit to show, there has to be a, I'm gonna say, we have to look at the risk that something could go wrong. So look at your internal controls, assess the risk that something could go materially misstated, and then we have to design our audit procedures to address the risks that we find. We have to understand your internal controls and document your internal controls. That's where some of the management letter comments come from. And we have to assess whether, in our judgment, you will continue to go as a continued operation at least one fiscal year past the date of the report, which, of course, we're past that at this point in time. There is other information in this report called required supplementary information. That includes your general fund budget to actual report, and some trend information on your long-term liabilities for pension and for OPEB. That information is not part of the basic financial statements. It's additional information required by government accounting standards. And then the other report required by government auditing standards is the single, the reports in the single audit. And again, all of them this year, they're clean audit opinions. There's no modifications to the report. So it's a clean audit overall, with a few issues that we had to report to management in writing. So that's the part of it that we own. The rest is the financial statements, and I'm gonna go through, I'm gonna skip over the MDNA. Management's Discussion Analysis is really why things went up and went down. If you're interested in understanding the reasons for some of the changes, that's what the MDNA is all about. It gives you a comparative of two years of financial data for the town. I'm gonna skip that and go right to the actual, so sorry for scrolling through, but I'm gonna go right to the actual financial statements. And we'll start with, I can, the Statement of Net Position. So your Statement of Net Position has two columns. One is governmental activities. That is everything except for your enterprise funds. The other is business-type activities, which are your enterprise funds. And fiscal year '23 was, you're going down after this year to just having North Carver Water District. So it was the last year of closing out the other enterprise, the other enterprise fund, the Village, I can't even think of the name of it. One sec.
Cranberry Village.
Thank you. Cranberry Village got closed out in fiscal year '23. The assets were turned back. There was not a lot of activity, and it was really just the closeout. North Carver Water District will remain your only governmental activity. So for the Statement of Net Position, this is a full accrual set of financial statements. That means we have all of your fund-based information, so your cash, your short-term assets and liabilities, along with long-term assets and liabilities. So your capital assets recorded at historical cost, net of accumulated depreciation, show on this. So for governmental activities, that was $103 million. That is something that is not on your day-to-day books, but something that the town puts together once a year for financial reporting. There's also your long-term liabilities, including your bonds payable, your sick-and-vacation accrual that we'll talk about a bit, and your, the big liabilities, which are your net other post-employment benefits liability, or we call OPEB. That is the town's liability to provide health insurance to town retirees. That, at the end of the year, was 40, over $41 million. And the net pension liability, which is, of course, your share of Plymouth County, which was just over 17, over 17 and a half million dollars at the end of the year. So those are big liabilities, part of your financial statements that we have to repine on. So a big part of the audit testing has to go towards making sure those liabilities are materially accurate in the financial reports. Again, the North Carver Water District or the enterprise fund is gonna be down to, in future years, just that one operation. It's always shown as full accrual. So Statement of Activities shows, this is basically your income statement on a full accrual basis of accounting. It shows all of your expenses by function, and then the program revenues that are being used to offset those expenses, with the net amount being funded by taxes, taxes, motor vehicle excise, your real estate motor vehicle excise, and intergovernmental revenues, which will show on the second page of the Statement of Activities or your income statement. So your general revenues were about $36 million, used to then offset those other costs in your financial statements. And with that, I'm gonna go right to the fund-based financial statements, which is gonna look a whole lot more like the reports that you're used to looking at from finance. This is, the governmental fund financial statements or the balance sheet does not have any of the long-term assets and liabilities. So there's no OPEB, there's no pension, there's no fixed assets. This is really a modified accrual basis of accounting in how you're used to operating. So this is where we focus on the real year-end cash and investments to make sure they are well-supported, make sure that you have a reconciliation to show that these numbers are supported by real bank balances that we can confirm independently. We test the receivables, which in this case, most of your receivables are fully deferred, unless they're fully collectible, like intergovernmental revenues are not deferred, but real estate taxes, for the most part, are deferred until you collect them. And we check for this, the year-end cutoff. cutoff. So if you have any amounts that are due and payable at the end of the year, accrued payroll is a timing issue at year-end, warrants payable, we want to make sure that we're checking, to make sure any bills that may have been incurred prior to year-end have been accrued by the town. So that's really the focus when we get to the fund-based financial statements. And then, of course, the fund balance is broken out into non-spendable, which doesn't really change too much. That's your trust funds. Restricted is anything outside of the general fund that has, so your special revenue funds, capital project funds, anything with a positive balance. And then your capital project fund can go into a deficit because you have temporarily financed that with notes at the end of the year. And your general fund, this general fund for financial reporting includes your stabilization fund. So that column in the financial statements, if you're looking and wondering why it's different than what you're used to seeing, it includes your stabilization fund. There are also reconciliations between the modified accrual and full accrual. And then we have the income statement relating to the modified accrual financial statements. Again, real estate revenue, very, very collectible, high collection rate. We're able to test that and verify it easily through looking at town meeting's vote, to looking at what you raised on your tax recap that gets certified by the State Division of Local Services, to the commitments that you're sending out and the money that you're collecting. So we really taught, are able to tie that number in. That is $30 million of your $50 million in the general fund. Another 16 million of that is all intergovernmental revenue, which can be tested and verified pretty easily. And expenditures, I will say with the general fund, it's, if you're looking at this, there is a general fund budget to actual schedule on the back of the report. Those numbers flow right up to this schedule. We're able to tie from, again, we are looking at what did town approve, what was at town meeting, what got raised and appropriated, and do you have internal controls here at the town to make sure what happened at town meeting is actually reflected in your ledgers, and that you have a process to not overspend what town meeting has approved for you, and that things are being approved and charged correctly. So that's really the, the audit process related to that. You had, and again, general fund includes the stabilization fund, a net decrease, very small minor decrease of $227,000. The capital projects, we expect that to go down as you're spending money on your projects. The other funds are all, all had an increase this fiscal year. So that wraps up the governmental funds. I'm going to walk, that does not include the North Carver Water. I'm going to go right to that one next. So as we mentioned, Cranberry Village goes away this year. North Carver Water, there's your full accrual, so it has your capital assets related to that, the cash that's set aside for that function only. It's run just like a regular business, and they do have outstanding debt, but positive invested in capital assets and a positive unrestricted net position. And I'll focus a little bit on the operating revenue. It is subsidized. The subsidy this year from the general fund was $198,000. So you did fund part of it with transfers in from the general fund for fiscal year 23. It was less than it has been in previous years. So the year before, it was quite a bit more than that. And so the operations are becoming closer to being, to being sufficient. Do you have questions on that? And Cranberry Village comes down to zero at the end of the year, and that one will close out as your wishes. They have a cash flow for that. We won't go through that. And then finally, the fiduciary fund financial statements, these were not in any of the statements that we've looked at so far. They stand alone. This is the other post-employment benefit trust fund that the town has established to be able to set money aside to offset that large unfunded liability. So you're now up to $2.8 million invested with Plymouth County, the, the PARs, the PARs system. And you had a contribution of $225,000 in fiscal year 23 into the trust. There is a gross-up revenue and expenditure that's required to be reported to come to the final balance of 2.8 million. We do verify that column separately to make sure you're accounting for those funds separately, and they actually can be verified and tied back into the investment statements. And that's it, that's it for your basic financial statements. The rest of the report from here on in goes into the notes. There's a significant amount of note disclosure related to those. And again, the, if you look in the back, there's budget to actual for the general fund, along with 10 years, 10 years' worth of trend information. We're almost up to 10 years. It's building up to 10. I think we're up to nine now, of your long-term OPEB liability, and how the funding of that has worked, and the long-term funding for your pension system. As far as those liabilities go, OPEB is all on the town, right? That's your own liability. The, the pension system is part of Plymouth County, but is required to be on a funding schedule. So you will see that over time. They have to readjust, just like you do every two years. They have a new actuary come in and do evaluation of that, to make sure they have a funding schedule to be, to be funded no later right now than 2040, per Mass General Law. So good plan in place. And, and your, this year, your stabilization fund actually went up, your OPEB fund went up. So when you're looking at those reserves that you have, you do have the community preservation fund. So as far as being, being in a good financial position, having those reserves, having not drawn them down to fund operations, you know, we're still in sort of the post, the post-COVID years, if you will, and, you know, a time that communities are paying attention to those things now. The money from COVID is starting to, now we're at the end of '24 into '25, that money that was available for sort of one time to get us out of the COVID issues is going away. ARPA, the Recovery Act money from the federal government needs to be obligated by the end of this year, and fully expended soon thereafter. You have two years to actually get money out the door. But those, you know, right now is the challenge to see if communities can live without that extra money that came in through ARPA, and you're able to adjust your, your lifestyle and your budget. Revenues are there, your real estate money is there, motor vehicle is, is strong. There have been no issues related to that. State funding has been consistent. So nothing related to that. It's really having controls in place to make sure that you can, you can adjust when, when grant money, when grant money changes. Any other questions on the financial statements before I talk about the other reports a little bit?
Any questions from the board?
No. Okay. I'm going to switch gears and talk quickly about-
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, does your board have any questions?
I am going to talk a little bit about the, I'm going to start with the management letter, because this is the first year in a long time that we reported a material weakness to the town. So there are often comments that we have, that we come up and we say, you don't have material weakness, you don't have significant deficiencies, but we have sort of other matters that we bring to your attention. This year, we did have one comment that we thought came to the point of being a material weakness. It was really budgetary controls and general ledger maintenance. I talked a little bit upfront about you had a change in your financial software, you had some changes in your key staff in the finance office. And so that, I'm going to say, I'm not, I'm not here to make excuses for why things happen, but I'm, it looks to me like getting behind on recording things and having up-to-date, accurate ledgers led to some of the issues that were noted here. And this really spanned from fiscal year 23 through fiscal year 24, and now is impacting fiscal year 25. So I think you're all aware of this, but it really had to do with the funding and the votes for the Library HVAC project, where money was appropriated for the project in a capital project fund, money was then appropriated in the general fund to help offset or pay down some of the debt related to that project. And there wasn't a timely transfer of money. So the project overall was able to be overspent. They spent from the appropriation in the general fund, when they, when that was maxed out, spent from the capital project fund, those combined expenditures exceeded the authorization to spend for that project. And I think the town is actually going through a process now to sort of re-vote that or recoup that money so that you can, you can move forward with clean books related to that. Also, because the information, the transfer wasn't recorded timely, you were allowed to, you overspent the project in total. And then at the fiscal '24 town meeting, it appeared as though money was available to be re-appropriated. There was a vote to re-appropriate some of that money, when the money actually wasn't available for appropriation. So three things sort of went wrong with that, that really would have been caught if you had regular, if the transfer was made timely, that was voted at town meeting to pay that down. And there was, I'm going to say, more control or maintenance over the budget process, making sure the wishes of town meeting were met. That was, it's pretty unusual. We don't see that here often, but that's what can happen if internal controls aren't in place to make sure these things happen on a regular basis. In addition to that, we had a couple of other new comments, all sort of, I'm going to say, the same theme, but sick and vacation or compensated absences, the town wasn't able to update their liability. So we typically get a, get a liability, a listing of individuals with their rates of pay, and how much accrued sick and vacation time they have. And typically, we get that from the school, and we get that from the town. There's then an estimate of what, what portion of that would be paid out within the next fiscal year. Typically, 100% of vacation, you assume people are going to use, and a portion of their, a portion of their, their sick time, they would, you'd assume that they're going to use. That liability gets recorded in the financial statements. It is an estimate. It's a pretty significant or big estimate, but it's based on fact. It's based on real people and real accumulated time and real rates of pay. We were not able to get information to put that in your financial statements this year. The liability that's reported for fiscal year 23 is actually the prior-year liability with an estimated increase. So we were never provided with information from that. I don't, I think that Karen says she has that information now. I think that that is going to be rectified in fiscal year '24. We've talked, we've talked about that. It was, you know, probably a timing issue and where you were focusing your efforts to be able to close the books and get everything certified for fiscal year 23. But, but it's an estimated liability nonetheless. I will say with that also, like, just accumulating the fixed asset information for fiscal year 23, I think we ended up getting that sometime the end of July of '24. So, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, Madam Chair, I, I mean-
Yes, sure.
Just a question on the compensated absences.
Sure.
So I do see on, on page three of the management letter, under the comment there, there's, there's an approximate $1.3 million liability. And then if I turn back over through the basic financial statements, and just hopefully you can clarify this for me, I just missed it somewhere. On page 13, about halfway down the page, it lists the liabilities, and it is the compensated absences at $595,254. So there's a discrepancy there.
Yep. So I'll, so I'll show you. So on the-
Can I explain that?
Yep.
If anyone, you can make that larger again. The numbers are really hard to read.
Sure. Yeah. Can you see that?
One more. And I scoot it over at the bottom.
See if I can do that.
Just scoot it to your right.
You gotta click and hold?
Yeah. That's all right. You know what? I can, I think you can see what we need to right here. So you will see that, can you see my mouse? Yeah, you can see my mouse. So under current liabilities, there's $595,254. And then under non-current or long-term liabilities, there's $749,211. The two of them together are the total amount.
Other 1.3 million.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And no, I don't know how to move that back. But that's okay. I think we're okay with that. Do you have other questions on that? Are we good with that?
No, that's the only question.
The other, so next issue, so comp abs is another new one. The, the journal entry approval process. So one of the things that we do to, in our risk assessment, is we look at what could go wrong. And of course, when you're booking journal entries, it's typically a correction of something. You know, sometimes there are normal recurring journal entries that you're booking, but if somebody wants to change something or correct an error, a journal entry happens, right? You say that receipt was booked to the wrong account, or that expenditure was booked to the wrong account, we're going to move it, we're going to move it around. So part of the audit focus is always going to include testing journal entries. And what we are looking for with journal entries is that there is somebody proposing an entry with a good re-documented reason. We have to move this because of XYZ, and that there's an approval process. What we found in fiscal year '23 for journal entries is that often, it was a quick email back and forth saying, book this journal entry from here to there. There was no evidence of the reason for the entry, and there was no evidence that there was approval for the entry. So that is an instance where things could go wrong. Like, we can't audit it. There's not enough to support the fact that you are making an adjustment to your ledgers. We always want to see that journal entries have an authorization and a reason and good documentation behind them. Recording activity directly to fund balance was the last of the new comments this year. And that just means things were booked to a fund balance account rather than a revenue and an expense account. So to put your financial statements together, there had to be an analysis of all of the fund balance accounts, so you could pull out the activity that was your revenues and pull out your expenditures. It wasn't in all funds, but significant enough that it took a significant amount of time to go through and analyze those. That can lead to errors, because then you're sort of relying on us to pull that information out to prepare your financial statements. All activity really should be booked to a revenue or an expense account, and not directly to fund balance. If your system is requiring you to book any activity to fund balance, there should be a log or a side ledger cap to show exactly what that activity is and where it should be recorded to. So that was it for new comments. There were three old comments from prior years. The first one related to the North Carver Water District user, user charges receivable. That one remains unresolved. And I'm just going to give you an update on that. One of them, the next one, reconciliation of escrow accounts is fully resolved. I think they looked into those and found that they were, they needed to be closed out. And then internal control over the budget. But I'm going to talk about North Carver Water first. The status on that one is, there was, there was work done on it. So you've had a process to reconcile the commitments, the payments, and the write-offs between the planning department and the general ledger. However, they weren't able to reconcile. So we see a receivable on your ledger, on your books. We asked for support for that. We weren't able to receive full detailed support. And really, it was the reports that they were running from the system. They were comfortable that the information in there is accurate, but they were unable to run a report that didn't have all the accrued interest in it. So we weren't able to tie out the final number. So I think the town's been working on the new system, being able to give them the reports that they need, so that we can actually justify that number and get full information for it. I mentioned the escrow accounts is cleared out. And then the operating budget, this has been in here for a couple of years. And really, what we want to see is that there is a reconciliation between what's on your tax, voted at town meeting, to what's on the tax recap, and what's actually in your ledger that you use for day-to-day operations. I will say, there's nothing significantly off. There were, we were not able to be provided with a reconciliation, again, this year, which is consistent. But there were three different errors that were identified, where, oh, something didn't happen from town meeting to the recap, $58,000. One of the articles didn't agree to what was on the recap, $37,000. And there's sort of an unknown adjustment. So all minor, considering the numbers that we're talking about. But really, there should be a process to make sure those are, are, you know, really, really tight, and that the numbers reconcile without issue. So that does it for the management letter. And then the final report that we issue is the report on federal award programs. This is your single audit report. Anytime that you have federal expenditures, right now it's over $750,000. You need to have a separate single audit report. We have to do a risk assessment on your federal expenditures and identify which grants need to be audited as major programs. That 750 is going up to a million, so soon to be a million, but you were well over that. You spent $2.9 million in federal grants. Based on the risk assessment, special education, very typically, special education makes the mark on that, and the education stabilization fund, were both audited as major programs. That means we have a compliance supplement that we download from the federal government that we walk through, and there were no audit findings related to your major program. So clean audit related to that. And any questions on that?
Any questions from the board?
I guess going back to the findings, I know we had transitions of people and systems. Do we feel we have a handle on making the appropriate corrections for those findings?
Anyone like to answer that?
I can answer. Thank you for you, Ms. Chair. We, within the finance department, and we have a vested interest in making sure that the finances in Carver are sound. I just wanted to also just recognize two members of my staff, Joe Roach, who's the town assessor, and Kathy Kay, who's the town treasurer, you know, and just knowing that they're here so that we can move forward and make sure that we have internal controls. We've already addressed making sure that what's been voted in the warrant is reconciled to the balance sheet and to our Schedule A, and, you know, to our charter accounts within our actual budget. We've also put in place, you know, in terms of the journal entries, making sure that we have workflows within our apartment, and we have approval process. We have a tracking system that's set up within the last few months that I've been here within the office. In regards to compensated absences, I know that we've had a lot of turnover, turnover in the finance department, but we have, you know, excellent manager within our payroll, and we have that information. So we have everything tracked for all employees in terms of their sick time, but- time, vacation time, personal days, health insurance, you know, people that have opted in, who have opted out. And so we've put in a lot of different internal controls and measures to address a lot of the areas that have come up in the financial statements. So I feel very confident that FY '24 audit, you know, is going to be, will address these issues and, you know, we won't have to see these in future audits in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chair.
Just a couple of comments. Thank you, by the way.
Thank you.
And, you know, years ago, back in my working days, I was spent at a good working relationship with Dick Sullivan. So I think that some of the things that I've heard tonight are really very conducive to some of the things that I've been saying for quite a while. And that is the lack of continuity in the way that everything is approached. We've had the revolving door. We've had interims. We've had permanents. We've had nobody. And that's within the top two positions within Town Hall, Town Administrator and Finance Director. We now have two very good people that are going to change that. We're going to come down and we've got a good working group going with some, making some changes. And we need to really get back to consistency, continuity, and do that year after year after year. And then we won't be hearing these things. And the other thing that I want to speak to is the need for a single comprehensive financial system, one that both the Town Hall and the schools use, and it's integrated. That would solve a whole bunch of other things because right now you've got two of them. There's a lot of manual stuff going on. And that is another addition to the problems that we're having. So solving those two things, which we're on the way to, is going to make a big difference in our upcoming future years.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Anyone else? Comments?
I just, I was listening...
Mr. Shesky?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. And nice job, Ms. Davis. I just was, I'm pretty new to the finance committee, but I was struck by not the new comments, but the old comments. So that you're saying that's kind of a repeat offense?
Yes.
Even though it's minor, because it was relatively small dollar amounts. But when something happens repetitively, that's not a good sign. So we should focus on that as well.
Agreed.
And we have the new team on here, so it sounds like we have some continuity brewing. So, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, I will say on this part too, I think that, so myself and Karen, both new to the town of Carver, we do feel committed, though, that we're on the same page. I can tell you now, Karen and I speak a lot, daily, I'm going to say. But that's a good thing because we want to make sure we're on the same page. You know, I think it's very important for the town. We both take a conservative approach to finance. I think that's a good thing for a town. I think that's one of the things that we might need to change here in Carver a little bit. I think we've been a little bit too loose with about how we go about reallocating funds that were allocated at town meeting. It's a process I'd like to stop. And not that I don't think there's anything wrong going on, but, you know, once you make a mistake, it's easy for that mistake to be carried for years. So it's one of the things we'd like, both like to put an end to, quite honestly.
Thank you. Is that it? No one else? Anything else?
Yeah. All right. I'm just going to say thank you. Thank you for, thank you, Karen, for helping us wrap this up. I do think the town has a plan going forward to make things better. We've already discussed this. We've already sort of started the planning for FY '20, being in '25, for doing the '24 audit. So it sounds like, you know, the one good thing about coming to you this late in the game is that motions have already been put in place to rectify most of these things.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Mr. Townsend?
No, I just said thank you. That's all.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good. Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay. So at this time, I guess you guys are welcome to stay, however you want to do this. You want to stay for the American Rescue Plan discussion, no doubt. No?
Whatever. What do you guys want to do?
I'll stay.
You want to adjourn or you want to...
I'm going to take a five-minute break first, and we'll be back.
Just one thing before we take a break. I noticed that the next thing on our agenda is not the ARPA update, but the Eversource update. So we got to take that out of order.
That's why I'm going to take a break and we'll tackle that next.
All right.
Thank you.
You want to adjourn? Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Thank you so much for coming. Thank you, everybody.
So anyhow, let me ask you guys again.
Five-minute recess. Real quick. Two-minute recess.
Three minutes. Okay.
It's on now.
Okay. Good. Okay. Our next item on the agenda is an Eversource meeting, Eversource update, sorry, about double poles and Wareham Street from the town staff and from Eversource.
And Madam Chair, I just want you to know that the Eversource staff is here to address the issues of both the Wareham Street and double poles. Had a conversation with their manager, Ronette Goldstein, today, and she will update the board on where we stand.
Great. Thank you. Could you just introduce yourselves?
Yes. Can you hear me? Is the mic strong enough?
Yes.
So good evening, Chair, members of the board, Town Administration. My name is Ronique Goldstein. I'm a manager of community relations for Eversource Energy. And I'm accompanied by my colleagues, Philip Burt, who's part of the community relations team and covers the town of Carver, as well as Mike Pierce, who's the director of electric field operations across the entire South Region. And that's our lineman organization. So that's Mike's point.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name.
Bert B. York.
Thank you.
And I'm here to, as Glenn mentioned, I'm here to address the board and address issues that were brought to Eversource by way of a letter that I have earlier last month. I would say it was September 17th, I believe, is the date of the letter. So with the permission of the board, I'd like to address each issue, take it one at a time. And if there's questions in between or questions in the end, I'm happy to take questions and certainly my colleagues can assist as needed. So first of all, I just wanted to say, and though it may not appear to be the case, based on what you experienced through this letter, the issues that are noted, I do want the board to be assured and for the board to know that Eversource as an organization, Eversource as a company, utility, we do take permitting very seriously. So we permit land rights, either locally, state, federal. We permit environmental permits every day across the organization, across the business. So it's, we don't make it a matter of practice to skip a step. I just want the board to know that and rest assured this is not, this is an unusual case. And we met internally and we think we know what occurred. And so without getting into the weeds, I'll just give you a little bit of context as to what we think happened. So first, these poles, we'll address the poles first and then the tree removal, and then the double poles. So the poles that were set without an appropriate grant of location, when, first of all, the work order, which is our work process, our workflow system to do construction on the electric side, it's just the way that there's different tasks and different groups that are in the work order and they each have a task that they're responsible for. The work order was generated and there were rights that needed to be obtained. It's to serve, as you may know, a development on Wareham Street, a series of houses, and they needed an upgrade to the electric system. The project was designed a few years ago. This is a work order that's back from 2021, I believe it was originated. And there were poles that were set in Wareham and then across the border in Carver to be set. That's how it was designed. And as part of this workflow process, rights is one of the first things you do, right? You design it and then you get whatever rights that are necessary. And we obtained the rights in Wareham. It was unique because normally a work order is in one town. And I think that's where, what came to light is that we need to improve our process. This is not normal, what happened. And so we obtained the rights for the poles in Wareham. Someone closed out that task and then operations installed the poles under the assumption, and they had no reason to believe that the poles in Carver hadn't been permitted. So that was mistake number one that we kind of uncovered. And I'm working on a better process for projects like this so that it won't happen again. The second thing that happened was that the trees that needed to be removed to set these poles were removed through a normal process that our vegetation management undergoes. So as a state, their vegetation management is regulated by MDR, the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. That oversees all of our vegetation activities throughout the Commonwealth. On a local level, we work with your tree warden and we get approval through your tree warden. I think what came to light, and they operate under a general mass law, I think it's 58, which one is it? 87.
Excuse me. Yes, you're supposed to get a permit from the planning board and the tree warden to remove any street trees.
So they got permission...
Excuse me, in a certain area.
Yes. So they, I believe they received permission from the tree warden, but they were unaware of this planning board permit.
Okay. So I have to stop you there, if I may. I'm clear to me how Eversource could be unaware of the situation in Carver. Surely there are towns that have designated streets where this process has to occur. I can't imagine we're the only town. And this permit was issued, this work order began in 2022. Is that correct?
I believe in 2021.
So it's been a while.
I think it was an oversight. Do you want to say something?
It sounds like two departments within your organization weren't talking because they knew Wareham, they knew what they were supposed to do in Wareham and they didn't do it in Carver.
Yeah. It was, it's not that they didn't know about the planning board. It was, they didn't know about the scenic nature of the road. That's what our veg management is telling us. They know, they know the process. They just didn't know that road was a scenic road.
Right. So I'm sure we're not the only town that has scenic roads.
Right.
So they might want to upgrade their knowledge.
Yeah. Again, I think what happened here was, and I don't mean to take it lightly, but it was a series of unfortunate events. It was a series of mistakes that snowballed, really. So between the poles, I think what would have happened had the poles been permitted appropriately, what would have come to light is, oh, and by the way, this is a scenic road. You need this, this, and this. And the third piece is the conservation commission for removal of the trees because of the proximity to the resource area.
Correct.
So what I can tell you with the permission of the board, I mean, there's two options. We can't obviously turn back and change what we didn't do, but we like to do the right thing moving forward. And we can either cease, you know, cease energization of the project and get all of the applicable permits. So I did speak to our conservation, forgive me, our environmental lead. He can call, he was unable to come tonight, but he can call your conservation agent as early as tomorrow morning. And I also reached out to the planning, the town planner. I know, I believe he's on vacation this week, but I said, when you return, if we could have a conversation about this and make it right. So that's option one, number one, is to do all the proper permitting to get, you know, this done right. And then, you know, be able to energize the neighborhood. The other option, which is obviously not our preferred, is to pull out the poles and start from square one. We prefer to do the former, but I would leave it to the board's discretion. We'd like to make it right. And like I said, this is really just a series of mishaps. And what has brought to light is that we really need some better processes. We already have a process, but there's obviously gaps in that process. And this is a prime example of that. So.
So do any of you have anything further to add before I turn to my board?
On this matter, no. We still will address the double poles, but on this matter, I think we'd like to see if you have any questions.
Would a member of the board, Mr. Townsend, please?
Thank you, Ms. Hewens. I just want to point out, as far as the poles being installed prior to the poll hearing taking place, and you just mentioning that the approval happened in Wareham but didn't happen in Carver, this is not the first time this has happened. And this board, I think, has been, has gone out of its way in approving those polls because we didn't want to cause inconvenience to people receiving the electricity. But it's just not appropriate. And it can't happen anymore. And whatever internal controls Eversource has to address or has to accommodate, you have to reassess them because we just, as a board, I don't think it's appropriate. And I don't think we're, I don't speak first to the board, but I certainly won't be voting to approve any more poles that are already installed prior to the poll hearings. And it just can't happen. And it's been multiple times. So.
Yeah. I totally understand. I am, and I'm not taking this lightly, I'm coming in to this a couple of months ago. So I am new here, but I will make that commitment. I'm not new to Eversource. I've been here for 20 years. I've worked in a bunch of different locations. I'll make that commitment to you tonight on the record that it won't happen again. I mean, I'll fix the process.
Thank you. And I also want to add that I appreciate the three of you coming in tonight. But again, this board has requested that Eversource send representatives to our meetings multiple times. And I believe, and if I'm incorrect, Mr. Cannon, please correct me, but I believe there have been times when we've made that request and we haven't even received the courtesy of a reply.
Right.
And that's not appropriate. And that's something else that I think Eversource needs to address in their, in the way they deal with communities.
Again, I don't want to speak for my predecessor, but they know me. And my team's willing to, they're willing to come. The only reason why we don't have the other guy here, he went down south to support the storm efforts down there. We were going to bring the manager from Plymouth area. You guys got me. And I'm willing to come to any town they want me to come, I'll represent us.
Well, I think we appreciate that. And obviously, we want a good working relationship, but that's what's best for the residents of Carver.
I agree.
So we appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan?
Yeah, I think Mr. Townsend said all the comments that I had. And it is the communications. We would like better communications. And sometimes we have questions and they're not getting answered. You know, we ask and there's just no answer. And we just try to move forward as best as we can. But we appreciate if you could at least make sure that, you know, the questions we have from the board are being addressed for the future hearings.
And I'll put in my two cents. I agree with both these gentlemen. I just think that it's happened too often in Carver. I don't know of another town that would be so generous as we have in approving pole locations without all the proper legwork being done. So we do want to have a good relationship with Eversource. Obviously, we don't have a choice. But we would like it to be, there would be better communication. And it sounds like internally as well with Eversource.
Yeah. So we'd like, we hear you and we'd like to make this right. There's no reason you should be approving poles after they've been installed. That's backwards. That's not the way we run. Mike's group installs poles all the time. And, you know, this, again, this happened, this predates him becoming a director in the region. But he, you know, he's got a good control of his crews. And I think we just, a lot of lessons learned with this one. And like I said, we huddled a group of, you know, we met on Friday, a group of, you know, across the functions, engineering, vegetation management, environmental, the lineman organization, community relations. I can't remember who else was on there. But I think that, you know, crossed the gamut, trying to scratching our heads how this happened. I mean, that was actually the first thing that Mike said is how did this happen? So we get it.
So it would be nice in the future, as Mr. Townsend pointed out, if we could have some of those folks come to our meetings so that we could hear about the environmental issues, this issue, that issue.
So typically, I will say, the environmental piece will go through your conservation commission. That's the appropriate. I think the rights piece, I think we can arm our rights agents with a little more information in terms of sort of the why are we installing these poles? What is this? You know, perhaps we can bring that back. I think this one, again, it just sort of went south from the very beginning. You should have had the poll hearing and it would have followed the process that it doesn't in other projects that you've had in your town.
So just real quickly, the reason I, I didn't mean to single out your environmental expert, but if they come, then we'll know they've gone through the process with conservation, with planning board. with planning board. Just a suggestion, the more people from your company that can be here and answer our questions, the better. Mr. Ryan?
I was going to ask, is maybe future poll hearings, maybe there should be a form or a check or a signature that shows that all those things happened before it comes before us? Maybe that's the easiest thing to do, so if it, if it were required to go to, you know, other groups or boards, and so maybe if you have that paperwork available that shows us that it did go through that process as needed, that, that would suffice, you know, for the, for the hearing.
Let me take that back, just because it's multiple groups, so I think it's a legitimate request to say, especially if it's multiple poles and it's a larger project, have you, be able to have the right, right agent be able to say, we've done this, this, and this, and this, and we're coming to you last, right, through the last place.
Right, that's the correct way.
Let me, let me take that back to them. I don't want to decide for other groups, but I think it's a legitimate request to at least have sort of that checks and balances and be able to articulate that to the board.
So just be a document that checks the boxes, a checklist, and said, all these things have been done before it gets to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I would also suggest internally that we do that as a town before we schedule the poll hearing. If it hasn't gone through those other places in town it needs to go, don't schedule a hearing.
It's a shame for the town to have to do that.
I agree.
I think the applicant needs to be responsible for that.
I hate to say it, Mr. Townsend, but we actually go out and look to see if the poles have now been installed before we come.
I know, so do I.
Yeah, the trust has been broken, and we get that. We have to, we have to show you that we do do, we do it the right way, right, on the next project that's, and this project will, you know, be, will, will be redone. So I guess my question to the board is, is it at the request of the board that we start at square one, or that we just permit all of these poles appropriately, resubmitting a poll petition, and go to conservation and planning in advance of having that hearing?
What's the wish of the board?
I would imagine we would have to schedule a hearing.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, because at the last meeting, you tabled it, you never opened it, so they would have to reapply because it wasn't continued.
Yeah, and we can do that, I just wanted to declare, have, bring that back for clarification for rights, but we will only do that at which point we've satisfied conservation and we've satisfied planning board, if that is okay with the board.
And the tree warden?
Correct.
Right, thank you, thank you. I think that's.
And this would be a good test case, because if you bring that document that shows all those things were known, then that at least shows us that it's working.
That's correct, because it's a waste of our town's staff, frankly.
Yeah, I think we'll be able to have whatever, again, and I can't speak to whether, what type of environmental permit they need, but I think it's reasonable to be able to say, you know, that checklist, if you will, or that, you know.
If it's in with 100 feet of a bog, just assume it's a wetland.
Right, right, no, I just didn't know what type of, whether it's a, you know, a.
You'd probably need at least an RDA.
An RDA, okay. It's not my area of expertise, I know what I don't know. I know what an RDA is, but I wouldn't say what.
Request for determination of applicability, which is asking, do we really need a permit, guys? And if the conservation commission says no, fine, but if they need a variance from our local bylaw, you'd have to file for a permit, so I'll tell you that right now.
I will say, just for the, for the awareness of the board, on our transmission side of the business, so that's the, the large poles, the right of way that crosses over Main Street in two places, actually, in that direction, we have siting people, and so there's so many more, it's just the other sort of side of the house will say. The lower voltage, there's a gap because we have folks that permit land rights, we have environmental, we have, and it's, I don't want to say, I don't want to use the word siloed, but it's, it, some process improvement is due. So that's what we'll take back again so that we're not, we're not having this, we're not, you know, repeating this again in Carver where it's already happened a couple of times.
Yes, I'm glad to hear that because it's something that should have been done years So it's, it's good that you're starting. We appreciate it.
With the vegetation management folks as well, just to be clear.
Thank you. Anything else from the board?
Going to the double poles.
Mr. Cannon?
No, I'm also, thank you.
Okay, so I think the wish of the board, and we legally require we'll have to have a new public hearing. We would appreciate that you have all your ducks in a row next time, all the applicable permits applied for and received.
And a new petition through administration.
Correct.
Come through, no problem. Now to double poles, I guess?
Yeah.
Yes, please continue.
So I don't know if you want to take this one, Mike?
Yeah, so I guess, I guess the first, I would open it up to you, what, we didn't, we don't really think we have a huge issue of double poles in Carver. Looking up on our database, we had two that we needed to pull that were ready to, ready to remove, and there was nine, I believe, with other facilities on it that were waiting for the next to go. We're kind of working with those, with those folks to get, get their facilities off, then we'll be the next to go, and we'll pull the poles. Is there?
Other facilities meaning other utilities, so we're not the only ones on the poles.
Yeah, yeah, either Comcast or Verizon, and if you have.
Letter notes 28s.
Yeah, the 28, if you have those poles, then again, that's a process improvement that we need to make, and, because they're in our database if those exist, so if you have those poles, locations.
We can work with, I guess my, my recommendation, and we've done this in other towns, is to work with your department of public works and, and get eyes on, kind of cross-reference lists, and then work to chop down that list.
So what I will say is, what we've done in other towns is, if these 28 poles, if there's, you know, if we can get those poles and their locations and a priority list, which ones, you know, give us a top 10 you want done, 28's not a, not a heavy lift, so just, just let us know exactly where they are, and, and we'll get them out. They're not in our database, though, that's, that's, that's the issue.
We'll get them the information tomorrow.
Okay, all right, so you have that, Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I have trust in Mr. Woods back there.
Yeah. No, that'd be great, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a shame they're not in the database, but, you know, if you get them to us, we'll, that's not a heavy lift.
Yeah, we, we need to be, yes. I was just going to say, Mr. Woods, DPW superintendent is here tonight.
Great.
One thing I should note, and I don't want to be a damper, but I will say the double poles are typically a reflection of an upgrade, so anytime we reconductor, we build a new circuit, maybe the poles need to be higher, so we have to install ones, we have existing, our rights give us the ability, the land rights, I mean, to install adjacent to another pole, those are typically when we're improving the grid. So I guess I'm only saying that to say that it's, there's no way to get to zero double poles because we will continue to, with all of the electrification projects and programs, the solar, folks, you know, interested in battery and other upgrades to the existing infrastructure, those are, you know, there will be double poles, but we, again, are working with our counterparts in Verizon and Comcast to try to get those addressed more quickly. It's a challenge, but we're trying to do it.
Thank you for that. Is there anything else? Mr. Townsend?
Just a couple of questions. We've been told, I think, or at least I've heard multiple things in here about the poles as far as who owns the poles. I think we had an Eversource representative in here a couple of months ago now who told us Eversource owns all the poles in Carver, but I've also been told that they're all jointly owned poles, so can you?
Yeah, they're technically jointly owned, but we, the municipalities back in the day were split to, their joint ownership, we exchanged maintenance fees among the companies, between the companies, however, in Carver, it's an Eversource set and maintenance town. There are other towns that are, the town that I live in is a Verizon set and maintenance, but legally, they're, they're considered joint ownership poles.
Okay, so when there's a problem with a, with a pole, Verizon, sorry, Eversource comes out, does your work, then you notify Verizon? And do you track when Verizon has come out and, and done their work?
So we have a database, and the database is not perfect, so when we go out, we set the pole, we transfer our stuff, we fill out a sheet, it goes into the database. That database goes over to the next facility, it could be Comcast or Verizon, whoever it is, they're notified.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but there's no, there's no set, like it doesn't automatically go from Eversource to Verizon to Comcast?
Yeah, no, they're notified. The next to go is notified, and then the next, and then when they go, the next to go is notified, then when everything's off, it'll come back to us.
But it's a manual process, the notification is not an iPad out in the field where you press the button and instantaneously Verizon or Comcast knows. It's literally a piece of paper.
But is there, is there someone?
That has to be input into the system back in the office. Towns have, if you have any infrastructure on poles, whether it's fire alarm or fiber, towns have access to this database as well. It's a joint database for all the utilities that, we're happy to discuss that with DPW as well. Some towns want to know how to access the database.
But is there someone at, at Eversource that's looking at this database on an ongoing basis and say, okay, these five poles here, everybody's come out and done their work now, so we can, we can set that up to go out and remove the double pole and make it a single pole again? Or is that not?
I mean, we're notified by emails, so no, there's not like one person.
I'm sorry, by whom?
By the database.
So the database.
But if we're not in your database, how would you get notified?
Because the database, well, if, we wouldn't, if you, if you transfer your stuff, if you have stuff on a pole and you transfer it, you would contact us if you don't, if you're not in the database.
Maybe I can just give you an example, and you can tell me where I'm, where I'm going off here, or how it gets tracked. So there's a pole, there's a pole out in front of town hall for, just to, to take an example. You go out, Eversource does their work, you notify Verizon, Verizon goes out and does their work, Comcast or Xfinity, whoever we are now comes by, they do their work. So now all the work's done, it's time to remove the double pole and make it a single pole. How do you know that it, all the work's done and it's time for you to go out and remove the double pole?
Whoever the last person to transfer their stuff off of the pole was, they put their stuff into the engines database, and I get that email saying.
So that's how you know, so it goes back to you or someone in your office, and you now can track it? And that, well, that's, that's what I was asking, so there is somebody at Eversource that's actually tracking these and knows when all the work's done, so it's time to go out and, and remove the double pole?
Yeah, the challenge is getting that sheet in the database, that the person needs to fill that out and getting it in.
So who is the last in your chain typically?
Comcast, so it's, we're at the top, then any town communication, so the municipal, whatever it may be, is right underneath electric, then Verizon, then, so, excuse me, then Comcast, then Verizon's at the bottom. So typically Verizon, once they're done, they'll put it into engines and will be notified that we're, you know, to pull, we're the next to go, and it's, it's to be pulled.
That's if all, that's if all three facilities are on the pole, yeah.
Sometimes you have third, other attaches that are different, and it could be fiber or some sort of alarm. You know, I will say it's, it's a challenge because the same folks that do all of the work in Mike's group and respond to storms and respond to hit poles on a Saturday and do this, that, and the other are the same ones, so the sheer volume of work that's just getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and so the double poles, they're, they fall to, to the, you know, middle or bottom of the list because reliability and restoring power and keeping the lights on are number one. So when there's a safety, some towns will come to us, it's a very popular topic, so aesthetically, they're not pleasing, you know, if there's any safety concerns, go, I would go through your fire police, they can notify us and we'll go out there and take a look. But it, you know, we're, we're trying to get our arms wrapped around it more quickly, but it is a challenge for all the utilities, and especially since we're dependent on one another, so we have no sense of timing for Verizon or Comcast when they're going out there.
Yes, I appreciate that. So it sounds like this is all done on a piece of paper?
The, the, reporting into the system is manual and on a piece of paper, yeah, given to a clerk, then put into the system.
So we would like, we would like some way for us to be notified when the last person to do work has done the work, and when, as Mr. Townsend said, when the poles are going to be removed. So maybe it needs to be more automated?
So I think what we can offer up in this situation, since there's such a few number from what we understand, is if we can first meet with your DPW, have an understanding of how many there are, what are the poles, which are the priority ones, to Mike's point, so if we can do 10 on one street, I don't know if they're all, it references main thoroughfares, right? I don't know what that means. So along main thoroughfares of the town for, you know, that they've been there, so if we can start there and we can certainly communicate either through your town administration, we at least start to get those, you know.
Mr. Woods will, is, will be good at that. So that, that would be good.
Mr. Wood, okay.
And main roads are probably just what it means, our main roads.
Yep, okay.
Through the chair, did we, how many did we actually identify? So was that in the letter?
Twenty-eight.
It says, yeah, it said twenty-eight.
So we had twenty-eight, but in the database there were?
We're not in their database.
No, I mean, how many were in the database?
Some of them aren't.
I had eleven.
You have eleven.
So about half are not in there for some reason.
Yeah, less than half, okay.
More, more than half.
More than half.
I guess part of this is, I can understand with, you know, if you're there for storms and there's all kinds of things always going on, things don't always get into the database or tracked, but maybe it'd be good if, that we had a, you know, a way to maybe send a report or, or keep in touch and, and figure out, you know, our, our operations department could probably periodically just, who would they talk to, in other words, and say, hey, by the way, these poles have been out there, they've been out there for a long time, is that something you can get on your radar? Because I know we're getting in a storm season, and it's going to be very difficult to get this done, but a lot of these have been around for a while, you know, they somehow, they, they fell off the radar and they've, they've been in, you know, they've been waiting to be resolved for, and that's why we've had residents come before us, that's why we were going before you because of some of these issues, but is there a number that our operations department can get, and then maybe through the town administrator, we can kind of coordinate this going forward so that we have a reasonable management of the number that are not completed?
Yeah, so I, what I would offer up is, on any day, if there's a concern, to reach out to community relations, you know, if there's a concern on a particular pole, I would say that we can on a regular, again, not a huge number, there's towns that have hundreds, right?
Wow.
We can, we have the ability to run a report to tell you where we are. In towns where you have a large volume, let's say the city of Framingham, the city of Newton, they have regular joint meetings with Verizon and Comcast and Department of Public Works. I don't know that their city council gets involved in it, maybe, but they do a regular sort of check-in to see where the numbers are at. Again, I'm talking about a much larger volume, we don't have that here, so I think this is, this is doable, but it, you know, again, I think community relations should be your first stop in general, when you have any question, we're the liaison to the company from the town, and we will get you to the right person and get you the information.
So if I may interrupt you, so I believe community, community relations has not been particularly responsive? Okay, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not talking about you individually. It just seems to me there should be a little more automation to this, you know, we may be a small town, but we're important too, and our 28 poles matter to us.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I think it's doable.
And again, you know, Eversource has been dealing with storms for as long as the electrical grid has been around, so I don't, I'm not trying to be harsh, but that's not really an excuse for this kind of communication that appears to be lacking.
I would encourage the town, though, to look into getting accounts with the engines database, because that will give you the opportunity to see what's available in terms of what, what's in our system, because for us, we're talking about literally tens of thousands of poles across the Commonwealth, right? So in order to track five, 10, 15, 20, 30 of those town by town is extremely difficult, so, and, but the public does have access to that, public safety does have access to that system, so whether it's through DPW, police, fire, they can get an engines account, and then you can go in and look in Carver, so you could essentially do a street test, you could do a visual, go down the street and say, all right, here's a pole number, let's make sure it's in the system, and if it's not, you could alert us that it's not in the system, because if it's not, if we don't see it in the system, there's no way we're ever going to know to make the move on that pole. So that's a great way to be able to track them as we're going.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes, Mr. Townsend.
So when you, when there's an issue with a, a pole being repaired, and you need to create the double pole, and Eversource goes out and fixes the pole, if it's a particularly bad pole, do you, do you somehow mark those that, hey, we need to put a rush on this pole because it's, it's swaying in the wind, or it's, it's really damaged, or are there, are they all double poles, or do you have a priority list, or like, we need to get this one taken, taken care of quickly?
If it's a damaged, excuse me, if it's a damaged pole, we call the other utilities and tell them, you know, we have a broke, either a broken pole, rotted pole, and it needs to be changed, we all go and we change it. The ones that you see here are, you know, parts of other capital improvements that we've made in, in the Carver area, part of conversions, small conversions, some, some sensing capabilities, And I would say in the next three years, you're going to see, I hate to incriminate myself, but you're probably going to see a whole lot more double poles because of all the major power quality improvements that we're going to be doing in the next three years with the DER and the energy resources and just major new feeds into the town to, you know, your power quality is going to be much better. But you're going to see a little bit more double poles. It's a challenge, like we were saying, like, right now, and I know, I don't want to offend anyone, 28 poles does mean something to you and I understand that, I appreciate that. But we're going to see, you're going to see a lot more. But like Ronit said, it is, it's in the name of providing a better service.
Oh, absolutely. I think we understand that.
The reason I ask is not, I mean, listen, I think everyone supports improvements in the electrical grid and if we have to have some double poles to help that, I don't think that's the issue that we're talking about tonight. But we have had residents come in and they've been on nights when, as Eversource representatives have been here, we've had poll hearings where there were poles that were damaged and they were really damaged. I went out, I could probably dig pictures out of my phone here, because I went out and looked at a couple and they were really bad and residents had complained when the wind blows, they have issues with, you know, cable service or things like that. But these poles were double for a long time and they weren't repaired. And that's why I'm asking, because I'd like to know if a resident, if there is a pole out there that gets damaged for whatever reason, and it's really, you know, it's not just a, it's not a good, there were sturdy double poles out there, then there's some that are particularly bad. Is there someone we can, as a town, reach out to and say, hey, you guys need to put a priority on this one because this is causing problems?
I would say funnel it through community relations. Send an email because that's the easiest path. Sometimes I've gotten texts with pictures, sure, but I think the easiest path is an email so that we can just then pass it to the various groups and say, this is, you know, this is coming to you.
I would say him.
Yeah.
His office is right next to, right, the next office over, so.
Yeah, I was just saying, like, I literally got a text and photos of a pole on the Cape like two weeks ago. It was rotted through and was able to route it through to our operations folks. They went out in two days and pulled the pole and fixed it. So, yeah, pictures are great, that's very helpful. Pole numbers, super helpful. So we can locate the infrastructure, not just, you know, send somebody out.
What was troublesome about the ones I referenced is not that they were one pole that was rotted, it was a double pole. So somebody had come out and repaired the pole, they just never took down the old rotted pole that was just sort of hanging there. And that's why I wonder if there's a, if somebody keeps track of those, because that seemed to be a priority.
Another reason that a picture is worth a thousand words, right, is that we can see who's on the pole, if you take a good picture, because we might not be able to do anything until Comcast and Verizon get off. And there's a sort of golden rule, but we don't, they definitely don't touch our infrastructure if this will get hurt, but we don't move other infrastructure, but other companies' infrastructure, but a picture would be great.
Okay. Any questions through the chair?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Is it possible in your database to add information about a scheduled, you know, the status of the pole and when it's going to be, the other one's going to be removed? Can you, how do you schedule these? And do you keep any information in the database? So once we get in there, it'd be nice if you could see, okay, here's the pole, here's the situation or the status with it and it's going to be scheduled to be our, eventually as it moves its way through the other utility providers, you know, when you expect it's going to be replaced. That way, I think, part of our dilemma is we think they're going to sit there forever. So if you had a way of communicating, oh yeah, this will be removed next spring or something, I mean, that's probably reasonable, but as long as we know when they're going to be taken care of, that would help us a lot, I think.
Unfortunately, there's no way because it's multiple companies.
Yeah.
Again, the intent of the database, while good, it's not the best. I've heard that it's an improvement on the previous database that we all shared, utility predates me with utility, but it's still not a perfect system. So it is more of a manual, we can pick up the phone and call counterparts at the other companies and say, you know, we really need you to focus on these three poles on Main Street, we've already gotten off, can you just get, and then call, you know. We certainly welcome the town support in meeting all these other companies.
We could. I think I was going to ask that question.
It's one thing if we're the hindrance, right, because we start the process, which, you know, can happen, but it's another story if we're off all of them, which is...
Most of the time, most of the time when we set the poles, we transfer them pretty quickly.
Right. So we install a new one and a lot of times with the new project, I mean, again, we're talking about a long-term project, it's in everybody's best interest, right, so that we can finish, and in the town's best interest, so we can finish the, whatever the new, when Mike mentioned, a conversion, it's typically a conversion from a lower voltage to a higher voltage, which allows you, improves your power quality. And for a number of reasons, you attach switches in those types of projects, which you can remove power and pick up more people during that moment. So, the points taken and we'll do our best with, I guess, the system that we have in play and, as we said, we'll work with your Department of Public Works and address these in the letter.
So when you get to the end of your process, I think the town would appreciate knowing whoever's last to fix it and it's time to do a removal. We'd like to be kept in the loop.
Okay. And that would be an email to the town administration if they can notify you.
And copy to Ms. Weston, please. And also to Mr. Woods, our DPW guy. Mr. Ryan?
I was going to say, if, just to support you, if you are waiting on Verizon or Comcast and we know that, you know, 20 of those poles can't be dealt with because you're waiting on them, then maybe our board would have to call them in here and have a discussion of how to keep, let them keep us up to date on that because, you know, I can understand you're waiting, you know, if you get backed up with them, you can't really do much till they do their part. So we probably need to talk to them too if they're holding everything up.
We can provide their contact information if you'd like.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
I mean, I chuckle because it's, you know, but I'm not setting blame, we work on this together. We've stood, we've been in meetings in other towns, Mike, myself and the Verizon rep and we, you know, we hold up shoulder talking about how this is sort of a joint effort.
Yep. No, and I think we get that. So we appreciate that. We think communication is good on all, all the way around.
So it sounds like we'll provide the list and just keep moving forward here.
I'll have, excuse me, I'll have my team ride these poles out. There might be some stuff that we can do to leave them, you know, it's still going to look, maybe leave a chunk and we'll pull the butts out and we'll do the best we can to make it look good. It's still going, they're still going to need to transfer this stuff.
They have a methodology where they chug the bottom, so it's a, hey, I don't know if that will make it better.
Yeah, I don't know if it looks any better or not.
Sometimes, sometimes when they see the pole, though, and I understand that, like a leaning pole, it doesn't look good and it looks unsafe.
Yeah, I say we, let's, we'll figure out which are the ones that are real, the real eyesores, I suppose.
Yeah, eyesores and safety issues, important.
And residents, maybe a particular residence have really been passionate about certain ones, we'd love to know which ones those are.
Okay. We'll give you his phone number.
We can talk to him.
Great. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, thank you all for being here.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate you coming in.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
I'm sharing the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, next on our agenda, we have the American Rescue Plan Act update, our ARPA summary. Who wants to do this? Ms. Weston?
Yep. No, no. Turn it over. Okay. So there was an update today from Plymouth County and also one last week. So last week, and I think I sent that to you, that Plymouth County extended the obligation of funds from September 30th to October 24th. So that's good news. And then Glenn was in a meeting today and he found out that of all of the Plymouth County municipalities, only six municipalities have spent all their funding, only 11 have obligated all their funding and Carver is one of those.
So, Ms. Weston, what was the date on that, that it's been extended to?
October 24th.
Okay, great.
So, yeah, so that's great news.
I could just add, I think we're in a good position, you know, again, we're one of the towns that has obligated all the funds. I know six towns have spent all their funds. I think generally those are towns, larger towns that have a water system or a sewer system and that literally they're picking one project and they're taking all their funds and putting it into that one project. And we're just not in that position. But again, you know, one of 11 towns to obligate all the funds, so we're ahead of the October, you know, obviously that date has been extended because of pressure to Plymouth County, right, because some towns are not, you know, they don't do that. So I think we're in a good shape.
Okay, so as of the last meeting, nothing has changed as far as the totals go and we'll get a little bit more into that detail. So for Plymouth County, at the last meeting, we had expressed concern over the outstanding amounts and that very next day Plymouth County, I think we got on the phone with them, we said, we're going to call them and find out what's going on. And they said, well, that all these amounts are going to go before the commissioners for approval. So that should happen the week of October 7th. I believe they meet on next Thursday. So it was indicated that these amounts in blue, which are pretty much everything except for the electric vehicle and the meter pit, are on their itinerary, will be on their agenda for approval. So we can't say they're, will be approved or are approved, but that is a positive note for Carver, that all of those funds will be looked at. So the electric vehicle is still in process under Plymouth County review. For the decommissioning of the 22 private wells, five wells have been completed. We have received partial invoice for that. For the meter pit, work has started on that and we received an invoice today that will get processed, I don't know if it'll go through this week, if there's time, otherwise next week, for $96,194.37, which is great because that's almost a third of the whole total. So we're moving forward with that. So all of those are what has been submitted and the reason why the wells and the meter pit are submitted is because they're water and water is not a reimbursement. That just goes through to approval. The projects that are in process total $399,514. So to just go through the status of each of these products, projects, the Carver Middle High School air quality project, they were working on the contract, Ron Griffin at the school was, because he wanted to go through the ADALs. He is going to do two of the three ADALs that he wants totaling $25,342 and the school will pay for that additional funding. And so they will wait the return of the executed contract from the vendor. We're hoping we're able to order, they'll do some ordering in advance so we can get an invoice in and get payment going on that project. For the municipal well corrosion, as you know, the last bid opening, we did not receive any bids. So for procurement laws, we have to go out to procurement again, which is a delay. So the next bid opening is this Thursday. If we don't receive any bids, we are going to check with the state, but I believe procurement law is that you can just go out and solicit a vendor because now we have documentation that we've gone out to bid twice. So we'll see what happens Thursday, if we get any bids on that project. If we do, then we'll go ahead and contract with them. For the inspection electric vehicle, that is still in Mexico, it has not shipped yet. So we don't know if, we're assuming it'll be shipped and not driven or, we're not sure. Yeah, exactly. So with everything going on, we are not sure of the status of that. As far as the funding goes, this was going to go under revenue replacement, which is just a different avenue of submitting it through Plymouth County. If we have to use federal funds because of their deadlines, that's something now we may be looking at due to the delays. So that's, you know, a bridge we can cross when we get to the end of October. The CO8 deck, the contract was returned on Monday. So Dave Sinatoff is working with the contractor to determine a start date, so that's great, we're getting, moving on that. And for the municipal well emergency repair, the generator is scheduled to be received on November 25th. That is in the U.S., so there, it is not being shipped from out of the country, so that is not a concern. So that installation will be in December. So we will just have to make sure we get those invoices in immediately. That is it. There's no change on the federal update. All the same projects.
So Ms. Weston, not to throw a wrench into the works, but do we have to get the electric vehicles in from Mexico?
That's where the dealership gets it from. So we got it through the dealership.
So they don't make them here in the United States?
I guess not.
Electric cars are made here, too.
So we went through the state bid list, through that contractor, yeah.
Whoever they manufacture is, you don't control that.
That's a shame.
I mean, you have to put it into the bid process, I would think, but that would be...
Yeah, just wondering.
Okay. I think it would be very unusual, but that's all, like hold this out of the process.
So that is, that's it. Any questions, anyone?
No, thank you for the update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Town administrator update.
Sure. So a couple things for the North Carver Water District, as you see, the chairman is here. At the recent meeting, they did approve payment of the previous two Middleborough water bills. If you remember, we had a little bit of hiccup with the very first Middleborough water bill that we received. At that point, the North Carver Water District didn't have a full board, didn't have a forum to be able to vote on it. We did process, I believe it was a $39,000 check. And again, it's just some hiccups there at the beginning, but, so they have invoices for the previous two quarters and that those bills have been paid for a total of $60,000, $67,300. So that's a good thing. The North Carver Water District has put out, well, in the process of putting on the RFP for the distribution system operator. One unfortunate thing, and we just had a meeting over at the police station for the North Carver Water District, the town of Middleborough, you know, and I understand this, they really say that they're not contractors, they're not here for making a profit, you know, they were helping here to help out the town of Carver. They're not situated to be, you know, like an employee for the town of Carver or, like say, or a contractor. So they've asked us to look at having our own distribution system operator, which we formerly did, you know, small water systems. So again, that RFP is moving forward. One, two other things that the North Carver Water District did vote on, one is for the chairman, Bob Elvin, to sit in and be a member of the negotiating team with the town of Carver for the municipal, inter-ministerial agreement, for the services that we provide to the North Carver Water District, to make sure that those are cleared out, spelled out clearly. I think this board is aware, there really have been blurred lines, I would say, between the town of Carver and the North Carver Water District as to what work was being performed by whom. You heard the audit today, you know, an enterprise fund in the North Carver Water District is an enterprise fund, it really should operate as, almost like a standalone business. You know, it should generate its own funds, it should spend its own funds, it should operate independently. It really hasn't been that way for years. You know, the town of Carver has been supplementing their staff and their needs, I'd say on a need basis, you know, there's been some problems there that need to be corrected. So we're going to try to clear up those and clarify those lines of work details, if you will. And then also, they did vote for one of their members, Eric Mueller, to reach out to the town of Middleborough to see if he can open up those lines of communications with the town of Middleborough. Again, Middleborough is clear, they don't want to be working for the town of Carver, they're not equipped for that, you know, they don't have billable rates or anything like that. But the, I know today, the North Carver Water District requested that they stay on for another 30 days so that the North Carver Water District has time for that RFP to go through the system for that distribution system operator. It just takes time to put the RFP out on advertising and get the bids back in, you know, you never know where that goes. So that is my update on the North Carver Water District. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Let me go through my town administrator goals then, just to show us, we had an update on the ARPA process. I do want to thank Elaine and all the staff for working on this, much of the work was done before I ever got here, but I'm glad to hear that, you know, we are in a good position. You know, it's very tricky, very, anytime you get a federal grant, there's always a lot of bureaucracy with it. Every time you go from town to state to federal, the bureaucracy always steps up. So there's a lot going on there. On the North Carver Water District, again, you just got the update there, working well with the North Carver Water District commissioners, make sure things are going smoothly. Working, I worked with the finance director to come up with a timeline, we do have a timeline, I have distributed that to the board. You know, some of that will start, some have already, actually, already started. Capital information has been sent out to them so they can start formulating their request. Next week, their budget, request sheets will be going out to them so they can start working on their budgets. And again, we're going to start getting into that process. Certainly my goal, and the goal of the board, is to have that wrapped up, I'd say, by the end of January 2025, for, for an April town meeting. I really want to hold to that goal, too. I think that's something that is very important. And I think the most important part of that, really honestly, is the, is starting as early as possible, because there are many iterations of town budgets you have to go through. You know, people put in their requests and sometimes you have to say no to these requests. That's, that's how it goes. That's my job, you know? But that takes time, too. You want to work those, those priorities, you know, and there's certainly different priorities between different departments and you want to work out those between, is the highest for the town overall. So sometimes that just has to happen. Good select board decision-making by providing thorough and accurate information. This is one that I would say we'll continue to work on. It is a dynamic situation, it's always a dynamic situation. Even this past week, I, I took two days off and, God forbid you take a day off, I felt like I felt a mile behind. And I think that sometimes that might hinder the process, so we want to keep working on that. On completing a succession planning for all department heads, again, I've had that discussion with, with the department head group, but it's now time for me to identify individual department heads and have those one-on-one conversations with them to make sure that that's happening. And then the newsletter, I did get out the draft newsletter, I'm going to try to come to a cycle at the end of every month. I think that's the best way to do it, because we usually have our select board meetings the first and third Tuesdays, and then, you know, that can incorporate that information into the newsletter. And again, probably put it on a cycle towards the end of the month. And Madam Chair, that's all I have for tonight.
So I just, does anyone have any comments? I just wanted to know, or to clarify, at least what I'd like to see when you get the succession planning from the departments, and that is for what's currently called permitting department, was previously our land use departments, which it still is, really. I'd like to see those internal department heads.
Yeah, I agree.
Come forward and be allowed to take a little bit of ownership, because Carver is land use, essentially. So I think they're very, it's important that we hear from our conservation agent, our town planner, our building commissioner, our health agent.
Yeah, I would agree. You know, I view it kind of like the finance department, you know, you see Karen here tonight, but, you know, under Karen, there's, you know, there's the treasurer, there's the assessor, you know, there's a lot of departments within that department. So I see the land use being the exact same way, too, you know, conservation, border health, in the building, all, all need to have their own separate plan.
It's a misnomer, because they do far more than just permitting.
Yeah, they're doing town planning also.
Yeah. Conservation planning. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that it? Nothing more?
That's all for me, yes.
Okay, great. Topics not recently anticipated by the chair, 40 hours in advance of the meeting, I don't believe there are any.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Approval of open session minutes of September 3rd, 2024, September 6th, 2024, and September 17th, 2024.
Motion to approve September 3rd.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll have to abstain, I don't think I was here, actually.
Then does it get approved? I think you can still approve. Yeah, I don't think anything.
You think so?
Oh, yeah, I've always heard you can.
It isn't, I think, but yes.
You can, you can approve.
It's still abstaining, it's two, two to none. We're still, we're still majority voting.
Okay, September 6th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. September 17th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of executive session minutes and not for release of September 3rd, 2024.
I actually have not had a chance to review those executive session minutes. I wonder if we could move them to the next meeting.
Can we do that, Ms. Weston?
If not, I'll just abstain. Yeah. Because it'll be 30 days.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have, if you go back and read them and have changes, we can put it on the agenda again.
That's fine.
Revisit, but.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye. Yeah, I'm going to abstain.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Request for use of gazebo, the Salvation Army, November 13th, 2024, from 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Just so we know, this is a terrific event. They're lots of fun, they have a band.